That's pointing at the seat. That's why you should be here. You ready to begin?
I turned everything on at like three o'clock today. But it went, I guess it was on too long, it went to sleep. But we're live on that.
You ready?
It's on.
Jimmy stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Voting a motion to approve the agenda.
Yeah, make a motion that we approve the agenda.
To move in properly, second, we're motioning, ah, we'll start, Ms. Chair. Mr. Norman. As have it, agenda approved. There's no public participation tonight. Good news.
Well, we have some great news. Miss Ivy would come forward along with her principal. Miss Ivy is a national board certified teacher and and she deserves those. For being a national board certified teacher, she has to undergo recertification and that's not easy either. And occasionally there are people who ask to be recertified and they are not given those credentials, but she very much earns these credentials. She is an exemplary teacher. In fact, this year, she's so exemplary, Mr. Peel has her teaching two grades. She has a combined class and does it with ease. I mean, we are so grateful for your talent and you getting these recognitions and working hard to get them and keep them. But now she is certified, national board certified teacher, 2021 to 2030.
That's all.
Miss Ivy.
Congratulations, Miss Ivy.
Are you going to the fourth grade next year? Okay.
Bless you. Also, under good news, we appreciate the continued leadership that JROTC provides for not only the school, but the district and our community. One of those efforts recently has been that they are offering prom dresses to our students and they can go try them on during lunch or after school, but they are available just there, there outside of Ms. Peel's door. And in fact, I heard them when I was over there today asking for another rack because they wanted to be able to spread them out and so that girls could really see what is there. But, you know, they do a lot for our community. Just a couple of weeks ago, they did a community litter pickup, you know, the adopt a road program, but it's about giving back. And I'll just throw this in there, even though it's not on there. When Ms. Jackson and I were talking about at the blood drive today, she was talking about her kids learning the value of giving back and participating in the community. And we were talking about some plans that she has that bring the kids back to the nursing home and let them paint nails and let them have a conversation and just give back to our community that supports us. So we appreciate all those leadership efforts. That's the good news.
You want the other good news is?
I was gonna do it superintendent report.
All right. I'm voting in a motion to approve our consent agenda tonight as presented.
I have one question on this. About this avid day that they're gonna have, is this the eighth grade included in this?
It's just the eighth grade, yes ma'am.
All eight graders.
It's the eighth grade avid students. There was a limit to the amount of students you could bring.
Twenty students, right.
Yeah, it was, it was limited to the amount that you could bring to campus. But Ms. Stokes, you wanted to mention anything about that, but they selected the students that would be participating.
But right now, with me, we sold from each grade. So there's a combination of twenty per grade, twenty total, but we sold six, seven, eight grades.
Okay.
But they capped us off.
Okay, I didn't make sure that the eighth graders that done all this avid stuff is included in this. All right.
And it may be, Ms. Clark, that we can kind of see what they're doing on April 12th and we have a very good, strong partnership with East Carolina. It may be that we could return for a different day and do some of those same activities. So we can certainly reach back out.
But can't we get another school, let them go to other schools beside ECU? Let the children see different schools like Liberty City State.
Well, I mean, the principals submit field trip requests and the board approves the field trip request, but we have opportunities to visit other campuses, which is why you have so many different field trips down here to approve.
Ms. Clark, just that avid day is put on in conjunction with the actual avid program in ECU. So it is like hosted, the avid event is hosted at ECU. So all of the avid schools in the area are invited. They have 300 spots for the, the day, the high school day and the middle school day. We were only invited to attend middle school day because that's where our program is. And then we were only allowed those 20 spots. And so we can continue to grow that program and have them visit other schools. But this specific field trip is based on our partnership with avid and ECU.
Okay. That's all you have, Ms. Clark? Okay. We have a motion on the floor.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. To move in properly, second, we're motioning with, Ms. Chair. Ms. Norman, Ms. Clark. Ah, for me, as have it, motion approved. Washington County Schools will be governed and supported by 21st century systems. Discussion and approval of the Washington County masking monthly update and review. I do want to say tonight that this board has been talking and trying to see how, what's the best way to move forward with our masking policy for the district. Just make everybody aware that our county has moved over to optional. And so in moving with the county, I'm gonna ask this board tonight to consider moving in a way with the county, but I do want to make this clear that in the event that this board decides to go mask optional, all power still rests within the local boards of education to make a decision that a numbers were to rise, that we go back to complete masking for the district. Do want to make, mention this also, we do not want anybody that's in position of power in this school district because you have a child in your room that wants to wear a mask, that you tell them to take their mask off and they don't have to wear it. That is not the way we're gonna go. If this board find out that, that that's what's happening, we will consult with the superintendent to make sure that that's not, never happens again. And so with that being said, our county, our Mr. West Gray, our county health director has already said, has already stated that only masks could be worn during clinic. So they will have masks on while clinic is going on. And so what we want to do is we want to try to move in that direction. We're talking with the board. Now, you still, optional means this, you still have the right to wear your mask. It does not mean that you can't wear your mask. You have the right to wear or not to wear. And we do not want to put our bus drivers in a place policing mask. So when we say optional, optional means optional. Okay, so with that being said, board, I'm gonna call for a motion tonight to approve mask optional for Washington County. In the, in, I want this motion to be recorded. In the event that numbers, we see numbers going up beginning Monday, we'll start. If we see numbers going up, we will go back to mask mandatory for the entire district. That is the safest way possible.
So Chairman Reddick, just for clarification, is the mask optional effective immediately or effective Monday? Okay.
Everybody can digest and they had time to prepare.
Okay.
One more point of clarity, that also means that we will come back together as a
Every.
That this, no, if the numbers begin to rise, we will come back together.
Yes.
As a board.
Effective immediately.
Okay.
We only have to, how many hours we need to have to call for a meeting, Ms.?
Forty-eight.
Decision be made in forty-eight hours, I can guarantee you that. So that being said, there's no more discussion. Need a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion that Washington County Schools go on optional mask requirement pending significant rise in cases that we have option to. Come back as a board and review the update. Effective Monday.
March fourteenth.
Effective Monday.
We moved in properly, second. Motion, ah, Ms. Chair. Mr. Norman, Ms. Clark. Ah, for me. As have it, motion carrot. Thank you. You got to keep them on tonight. Monday, you can do what you need to do. But if the numbers do go, we do want to stress that, that we will go back. We want people to be as comfortable as possible. So please don't tell a child, take your mask off. If they want to wear their mask, let them wear their mask. Approval and resolution of Northeast Regional School of Biotechnology and Agroscience, or we know as Nurseville. We, DM mentioned that we would come back and do this every month because we feel like we offer, and I am not ashamed to say, we offer there, if not much more than what Nurseville offers. And so we are pursuing this to pull our, to grandfather what we have there and to keep our kids in, in Washington County. Y'all hear something to say?
I was just gonna suggest that you take action to adopt the resolution.
Yeah. Okay, so we need a motion to adopt this resolution to withdraw.
Chairman, I made a motion to adopt the resolution to withdraw from Northeast Regional School of Biotechnology and Agroscience, which is Nurseville.
Second.
So moving properly, second. Well, and do, I would want to mention that Mr. Phelps sits on that board. He represents us on that board, so he is already asked to recuse himself from the vote tonight. Ms. Chair. Ah, for me. Motion carrot. Information on Dr. Card.
Actually, Ms. Ambrose was gonna chair the literacy.
Hey, Ms. Ambrose, how you doing? Good evening.
In accordance with Senate Bill 387, each district is required to submit a literacy intervention plan for kindergarten through third grade to state. The first submission is by March 1st. The feedback is given in April and then revisions will be made from final submission in October. In preparation of the plan, a team was assembled, including teachers from kindergarten through third grade from both schools, instructional coaches, principals, the district MTSAs coordinator and the reading specialist. This team met a total of five times to prepare the plan. The plan consists of an overview of what our core instruction looks like, our assessment and data decision rules, then more specifically, our intervention plans for students in line with the components of reading according to grade level. The team referred to what we already have access to for interventions and what we've learned through the letters training so far to help devise the plan. For kindergarten and first grade, the plan addresses intervention in phonetic awareness and phonics. In second and third grade, there are two areas that we look at, phonics, spelling and fluency, and fluency vocabulary and comprehension. We sketched out what that intervention looks like for the strategic level, which is students slightly below grade level, and for intensive level, which is students far below grade level. This intervention plan will allow us consistency throughout the district in serving our struggling students and we will receive funding for literacy after plans.
Oh, me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrose. Yeah, question. Ms. Ambrose, how much, how much funding for that program is typically?
We actually haven't received funding yet. We only get funding after it is approved in October. We currently did get money in O85, which is a state fund that provides us money for substitutes or stipends, depending on how we are doing letters professional development and then money for twice retained students. And part of that funding is also to pay a sign-on bonus that was just released in March for teachers that have exceeding EVOs growth for summer camp. So we don't have any funding to carry out that plan currently, but we'll get funding based on our final plan approval of 22, 23 in October.
So this whole program is, is to support the students, right? That are, that are in the intensity and stuff. Is this extra days or extra hours? I'm just trying to figure out the money that we're gonna get potentially is gonna be going to?
To support our core instruction in literacy. So for example, we are currently in the letters professional development and while we're in that, we found a little bit of holes in the core curriculum that we have and that we're gonna need additional support in phonics for our students. And so, once we get that, we can get more training in phonics. We can provide program, we can buy program for that. We can also choose with that to hire interventionalists. It just depends, it's gonna be a funding formula based off of ADM and then like Title I status for the schools that get that funding. So we won't know to the extent in which we're gonna get this and then we'll need to be able to supplement with S R funds or other kind of ones or whatever. But it's for what our daily instruction looks like, plus those intervention pieces that happen within that 120 minute reading block we have K5. Well, this is K3. We're being asked to continue through December in planning out what literacy instruction looks like, K12, and we'll then have to submit a plan looking at best practices, K12 in our literacy classes.
You've already got those, teachers are already identified that does this program?
It's not a program, it's our actual, our daily instructor. Our, we ask principals and instructional coaches for their suggestion for teachers to be able to support this. And then we'll continue to build professional development for all teachers in this area to ensure that those teachers are meeting those requirements of what we're saying is best practices in classroom. And then we'll continue to build that from now till December, all the way through 12th grade.
So the main purpose of this grant is to put resources, materials and stuff in the classroom for these kids, right?
Resources, but making sure that our teachers have the capacity and the knowledge to be able to provide reading instruction in a way that's aligned with the science of reading and that we are supporting them in that practice. We are moving from a whole word type of literacy approach where kids were given like centers and they were doing things independently to more direct instruction, phonics type approach to, with letters and the science of reading. And so instruction is going to look differently in our reading classrooms moving forward as we continue to take this to your professional development and really making sure that our teachers, that our instructional assistants have the supplies, the knowledge, the capacity to be able to provide instruction in this different way that they're comfortable with it and they have the resources.
So why does it include bonuses in this?
Because we are looking at a large gap in instruction for students. And so we need the most qualified teachers and to be able to provide that in term, intervention instruction during the summer. And so their goal is to get the most qualified teachers to teach our most.
Okay, so the bonuses are to help pay for teachers during summer school and stuff.
Yes, I found out today that part of that O85 money is from House Bill 387, is to be used for teachers with a certain EVO score to be selected to teach summer camp. And it's a sign-on bonus for them to be able to teach. Really trying to focus in and have our best teachers.
Even a high quality teachers in there, okay.
And it gives them an incentive.
And that's part of the law. We don't, it's not whether we do it or not, we have to use that money to be able to support that. And if we get more teachers than that money provides, then we have to fund that with other funds.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Presentation, approval of the academic calendar, Dr. Bentley.
Good evening. Speaking to the mic. Good evening and thank you so much for allowing me to come before you today and speak on the 22, 23 academic calendars. I come before you tonight to present and then potentially gain approval for the calendars as developed by the committee. And I'm excited that the majority of people behind me and to my right served on this committee and offered a great amount of wisdom on this process. So am I doing this right? There we go, it's probably getting ready. Okay, so a couple of state law requirements that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention is, and for this first bullet, we're talking specifically about our elementary and middle schools. As you know, our high school is restart and then of course, our early college has some different requirements. But our elementary and middle school are bound to starting on the Monday closest to August 26th. And so if you looked at the calendar for 2022, unfortunately, that meant that we were bound to starting on Monday, August 29th and could not start sooner. And that plays a big impact in the development of these calendars when we start to look at it. High school and early college can of course start earlier and so their first day is recommended to begin on Monday, August 4th. The end date for elementary and middle school has to occur on the Friday closest to June 11th. And for that reason, we must end on Friday, June 9th for our elementary and middle schools, which again, will also play a big part when we consider our start date. High school and early college will end earlier due to their earlier start date. And our goal was to create a calendar where they were able to stop before Memorial Day and we were successful in that. It must cover at least nine calendar months, a minimum of 185 days or 1,025 hours of instruction. I want to bring to your attention that the calendar committee met and discussed and chose an hours-based calendar because it allowed for more flexibility and because the later start date and early end made sense for hours-based and made a days-based calendar very difficult. And I do want to just remind that this year, we started on days-based and then came back together and switched over to hours-based, an hours-based calendar. It must have a minimum of 10 annual vacation days and it must have a same or equivalent number of legal holidays within the school calendar as designated by the state personnel commission for state employees. And in this calendar would be 11. State law requirements continued. We need to have at least nine teacher workdays where two of those are optional to allow for our teachers to take accumulated vacation leave if they so choose. In blue, you can see what is currently presented. Elementary and middle school currently has eight mandatory days on the calendar with eight optional. I have an asterix there because I want to bring to the attention, to the board that you see an increase in days there because we needed additional days at the beginning and the end of the calendar to meet the 215 day requirement. And it's the recommendation from multiple members of the committee that we have locked in PD days for our elementary school to meet the requirements of their letters training, which is a state initiative. High school and early college has written in seven mandatory days and four optional. School, of course, shall not be held on a Sunday and Veterans Day should be, shall be a holiday for all public school personnel and for students who are enrolled in the public schools, which is shown on the calendar. And then, as I just briefly mentioned, the staff, even though we recommend hours-based for our students, staff have, must have a total equal amount of days to 215. So when we add instructional days, vacation days, annual leave, it all must add to the magic number of 215. So if you look there on the bottom, I wanted to give just a side-by-side look with elementary and middle versus high school, early college. And you can see both have 11 holidays and 10 annual leave days. The workdays is where you see a discrepancy, 16 for elementary, middle school, 11 for high school, early college. Elementary and middle has written in 178 instructional days, whereas high school has written in 183. So semester one would have 92 days and semester two would have 91, which is really great work on their part as a committee to make sure that those two semesters align and then both of those equal to the number 215. I went backwards, my goodness, I'm so sorry. I wanted to bring to your attention and just show that we had met the requirements of the state. So we have a first and a last day of school for our elementary and middle school that meets the state requirement. We've written in 11 holidays to include Veterans Day, 10 annual leave. We've met the mandatory requirements for workdays. We have at least two optional workdays. And then if you'll go to that next to last row where it says student hours, if we go hours-based, we're required to have 1,025. This calendar has 1,068 instructional hours written in, which leaves approximately 43 hours on our calendar. Should we have to have a delay for inclement weather or school closure due to inclement weather? So 43 hours equals approximately seven days that we have to work with. High school again gets to start earlier and end sooner due to restart innovative. There's your annual leave, holidays, meeting the requirements for workdays. Staff days are met and there is a discrepancy with student hours here. Again, the requirement is 1,025. This has 1,094 instructional hours, leaving us with 69 hours left for the high school calendar, which equates to about 11.5 days for inclement weather. This, I think, is a really important slide to show for everyone because one of the things that the committee worked really, really hard on was trying to make sure that days align. So if a parent had an elementary, middle school and a high schooler, you don't want your children to be out at different times. In particular, it's much easier for the high school to be out, but elementary, middle school still, still in. But if elementary and middle school is out, chances are, having spoke with the principals, high school's gonna be out too because they're watching their siblings. And so what we did was spend a lot of time trying to align the calendar and if there had to be a discrepancy, making sure that it aired on the side of our high schools so that those. making sure that it it aired on the side of our high schools so that those kids would be in school. Uh, and so if you look here, there are moments, October seventh is a full instructional day for elementary school, but it's an optional teacher workday for high school. So the kids, our younger kids would be in school instead of high school having to be out and watching them. In fact, that goes all the way down the calendar. There is never a moment where our, and I'm really proud of the committee for this. There's never a moment where elementary is out, but high school is in. And so hopefully, we have a lead, we have um kind of spearheaded that issue to make sure that we wouldn't face that this year. One of the dates that we were really spending a lot of time on is the Monday, February twentieth. As you know, that's a holiday and this year, I believe if I'm not mistaken, high school was out. And then I believe it was an early release for elementary, middle school, and that was a concern. So it is a holiday for our high school, early college, because remember, they can't use Memorial Day as their holiday um because they'll be dismissing sooner than that. So they, the committee wrote in a, an optional teacher workday for the elementary and middle school so that everybody could be out. Um, so that's, that was talking about the calendar differences there. Where are we going? Perfect, okay. So um I've kind of given an overview. Um, the committee met four times for ninety minute sessions. Every school represented and then our department, maintenance, finance, um school nutrition, our teacher assistants. Help me, bus garage, everybody was represented on this committee and had the opportunity every week that we met to go back and during that one week before we had our next session, talk to their people at their schools and at their sites and bring that information back. Certainly, um, we hope that you see the awesome, the things that have been done in this calendar, but we welcome any feedback before moving forward. So if there are any questions at this time, I am happy to help.
Do you have any questions, Bo?
It's one thing that I would say that I think is I think they did a complete overhaul of this calendar compared to twenty two. I like that when you said that uh kids won't be out at the same time, uh it's, they helped the parents, they did, it helped the parents. I think that's a good idea, but.
The committee did that, they, they're just a good group, they really were.
I, I like it.
I'd also like to really commend, if you um take note of the staff calendar for elementary and middle school. Um, they really worked hard because they did not have the flexibility that high school had. And when you start as late as August twenty ninth, trying to get in those two hundred and fifteen days, when we have to end on June ninth was incredibly difficult. And we want, if we're hours based, to have a, a good little pocket of leftover hours should we go out for ice or an, a hurricane and you hope we don't, but if we do, you need to have that cushion. And they found themselves in a really hard position where when we wrote everything in, they only had, I believe, twenty five extra hours. And they, they did a really great job of making some hard decisions to make it work so that we were left with a bigger cushion than that. And, and so I do really commend the elementary and middle school for doing this calendar, giving the parameters that they had to go by.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion. Who's academic calendar for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two, as presented? Proper second, Ms. Chair. Mr. Norman, Ms. Clark. You didn't need but three anyway, so you know.
I'm so glad Ms. Stokes gave me this mask.
Eyes have it, it's approved. Go ahead with your next one, I think you got another one.
Yes, I do. Truly though, I really want to thank the committee. They did, they did all the hard work. Um, the summer testing plan is due every year to the state on April first. And so I come before you in the month of March to review this plan with you and hopefully gain approval and signature so that I can submit. Um, just really quick, the purpose of the um program is to, oh, there we go. So a couple of things about summer testing, because a lot of times, and I know, I know everybody on this board knows, but some people may not know who are listening in, summer testing is entirely different, the summer testing program from summer school. And so summer testing is the remediation and retesting of students in the E O C, E O G areas and this year N C extend, um which is our exceptional children's department. It can only begin after the last student instructional day, which means we can start the program during teacher workdays, but we have to make sure all testing is complete and instructional day is over. Um, parents have to be made aware of the summer testing program ahead of time, which if you look at the plan, is um the first week in May. Participation is entirely voluntary, but we highly encourage because this does go towards the data of this district. And so we really, really try to push the importance of this to our families. Um, if students do not participate in the remediation, meaning they don't come for the time to remediate, they are, they are not allowed to retest. So back at many, I don't know how many years ago, you could just show up for the test. That is no longer the case. They do have to come and they do receive remediation. These are all the elements of the plan that must be included and the check marks there show that it is in the plan. It, we state the purpose, who's eligible, the dates of the program, how much time is, remediation time is going to be provided to our students, how we're going to ensure that test materials are secure and then hopefully, um pending board approval submitted to our regional accountability office by April first. The purpose of the program is for our students to be able to repeat elements of a course or subject for the import, for the purpose of improving their skills. Um, this includes our E O Gs and our E O Cs with the exception of third grade reading, third grade reading is not a part of this and credit recovery, which would be our E O C students. Here shows you the tests that we are going to offer during the summer um program. This is the first year, if I've gone back and looked from previous years where we are offering a lot of opportunities for our students. Third grade is able to retake math, fourth grade can do reading or math, fifth grade can redo all three subjects, math, reading and science. Grade six and seven can do reading and math and or math. Grade eight, again, is just like uh grade five, they can do reading, math and science. E O C is all of our big four, math one, math three, English two and or biology. And then we are also extending this offer to our students in N C extend one, which are our E C students who take an alternate assessment. So we do have a lot of opportunities for them. Here you'll see the instructional dates for our elementary and middle school. This would happen or start on June fifteenth and go until June twenty third. I do want to bring your attention to June twenty two and twenty three. Those would be half days of instruction, but also testing days so that we could get it in in the right amount of time. Um, testing dates would be again June twenty second, June twenty third, and we would also do testing for two more days on June twenty seventh and June twenty eighth. This group, the elementary and middle schoolers would receive thirty two hours of additional remediation instruction, which would equate to about nineteen, would, would equate to one thousand nine hundred and twenty extra minutes of instruction. High school, early college would start sooner, of course, because they start their use, your year sooner, excuse me. They have four full instructional days, May thirtieth and thirty first and June first and second. Testing dates would be June sixth and June seventh. They would receive twenty eight hours of additional instruction, which equates to one thousand six hundred and eighty minutes. This talks about how the test, the test materials would be secure as they always are all year long. I have to say that our school's testing coordinators do an exceptional job of securing materials. Um, they would check out materials from me at the testing office. They would keep it in a locked closet, in a locked room before and after testing, and of course, they would check it back in. Uh, the fourth bullet is important. All students will test online during summer testing and which I think is good. And at the end of testing, all materials are of course returned um to me. Program cost, because that's always very important. Um, the state encourages this, but does not provide funds to pay teachers, run buses or feed the students. Therefore, um, we provide remediation and testing as much as possible during those teacher workdays because that minimizes costs in paying stipends to teachers. However, it does run over in some cases. Students will, after speaking with Mr. Rosenabi, thank you, he is exceptional. Students will be able to get lunch and breakfast every day through our summer feeding program while they're doing this remediation. Um, and then transportation is pending. Um, yeah, I think we're supposed to have a little pending there, I apologize. We need to work numbers because as you are aware, if you have been watching the news, fuel costs are just going through the roof, but um so transportation is pending at this time, but we do, we will meet to discuss removing bear, barriers for our students to get them to this program. And so if there are any questions, I am happy to answer them. And um if not, I would love to request an approval so that I could submit this um to our state.
Let's see, we can get Ms. Clark to vote for this. Okay, Bo, we, is, are there any questions for Dr. Bentley? Whether remediation gonna, is gonna take place at the Washington County Middle Pines Elementary Site?
It will occur at all sites.
All sites, okay, thank you. Alright. Alright, Bo, and no, you have any questions? No questions, uh we need a motion to approve the uh summer testing plan. Moving proper second, Ms. Chair. Mr. Norman. Eyes have it, motion approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Presentation approval of the summer programs, uh Mrs. Julia Simpson, Mrs. Jenny Ambrose and Mrs. Tamara Ritten.
Good evening. They'll be, they'll be joining in just a minute.
That's a support system.
So.
It's alright.
As you guys know, um last year I started this position um two weeks before we started summer school. And we then spent eight weeks um in summer school and we learned so much throughout that um eight week process. And so you'll see that our plans this year look very different than they did last year based on feedback from teachers, based on feedback from principals and, and just the overall um flexibility the state has given us that was different from last year. So what we're gonna go over this evening are the different summer camps that we are proposing for this summer. So we have Read to Achieve, Summer Bridge, C T Accelerator for Middle Grades, C T Accelerator for High School, and A I G Camp and Transition Camps. So first, we're going to look at um R T A. Uh, historically, this has been a K three camp. And it is mandatory by House Bill um three eighty seven that we do it in grades one, two and three. Um, and that if we can fund kindergarten, we should fund kindergarten. So um last year, one of the things that we were unable to do was provide any teacher workdays. And like I said, that camp ended up being eight weeks. And we are required to have seventy five hours of reading instruction for this camp. And with extending our days a little bit and providing student hours between eight thirty and three thirty. And for fifteen days, we can meet that seventy five hour um commitment. Um, like I said, it is mandatory for third grade, second grade, first grade. Um, and we are going to attempt, if we have enough highly qualified teachers um to be able to support kindergarten, support kindergarten as well. We are looking at um about sixty students and that's an average um right now per grade level with no more than fifteen students in a class. And that's looking at the class numbers we had last summer and what's currently on our watch list from looking at our data of what we would probably max out to need at each of these grade levels. As a part of um last year, we provided a hundred and fifty dollar um bonus to teachers um to come to work for four days. That was not very successful. And people would miss a day and still want to get that hundred and fifty dollars. They would come um late for several days and you know, we, it, it was not very um successful for teachers to be able to do it that way. So what we looked at was increasing the hourly salary and you'll see that this is the pay scale that we're proposing um before all of the camps. So we took the average salary of the teacher between years one through seven and then added money to that. It's about four dollars an hour per range that we've added. So from years one through seven, it would get twenty five dollars an hour. Um, eight through fourteen, thirty dollars an hour, and then fifteen plus, um thirty five dollars an hour. I know that fifteen to year thirty, twenty nine is the exact same rate um on the teacher salary scale. Um, year thirty is the only one different there. Um, so that's why that range is so much bigger than the other ones. Um, we would pay for this and we would have O one six, um which is yep, O sixteen, which is specifically for R T A. Um, we would also have um P R C one sixty three, which is expiring in June. So we would be able to plu- um pay for supplies from that. And then um we would have to pay funding, um transportation costs and whatnot, teacher, some teacher salaries out of one seventy one and one eighty one. And remember that twenty percent of our S R funding does have to go to that learning loss summer programming. We would hold on the district um summer school at the Middle School Pines area um for those fifteen days in June and we would be able to provide them a planning day um in July, July one, which they weren't able to have last year either.
I got a question. We talk about the teachers, but I remember last year when we did this. Um, and maybe just me, but we had administrators in the building that were there with their students and they didn't get anything.
Yes.
But they were still working.
Yes. Um, uh, we, that was one of the things that we looked at um this year. Um, I was there on the ground with them doing those things.
Anybody there working is supposed to get paid.
I understand and.
Well, I'm, you know what I'm saying, because last year it was a mess.
Well, I, I agree that there were struggles last year.
It was a mess, man, it was a mess. Now I'm telling the truth now.
I, I agree that there were struggles. Remember I started two weeks.
Not you.
Before we roll. The idea this year is that we would hire a lead um from someone who does have um an administrative degree. So just like we would be hiring teachers, we would put out a position to be the lead of the R T A and um Summer Bridge program. So they would be the, the admin in charge of that building.
So you want, you guys want requests?
Whoever is hired for that position.
Right.
So it could be um a, one of our eleven month A Ps, who was off during that month. Or it could be a teacher who has an admin degree that wants to step up and, and lead during that program. Um, but we would be looking for someone who does have that administrative degree to lead that program.
Won't have to be there, right? Is what you're saying?
Correct, they could take time off if they needed to. Um, that was, that was definitely something that we heard. And one of the things you'll notice that we have um like different people that are helping support all of these programs. Um, it was not very efficient for anyone. Um, for. For lots of different reasons. And so we've looked at um a whole different setup for this year. The Summer Bridge is a new program. Last year, we were required to do this program K eight. Um, this year, they gave us a whole new P R C, P R C one seventy six and said that you can provide um another camp in addition to R T A for any other students that you would like. Um, in talking with our staff, um we really felt that we needed to continue to support our students um four through seven. This program does have to be what's considered an accelerating program. So um we're talking specifically about rising fifth graders through eighth graders. So you see it's grades four, seven, so it's our current fourth graders, but over the summer, they would be considering our rising fifth graders. And what that program will look like is that we will be um giving them prior access to fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade standards and then um providing the prerequisite skills from things that they might have been missing to kind of build them up. So when they get during the school year, those standards aren't the first time I've ever seen them and we've provided them some remediation in those prerequisite skills. Um, we're looking, because it's gonna be at the same site, it's gonna have the same timeframe. Um, meaning hours throughout the day, but this program is only required to have fifty hours. But this program is only required to have fifty hours of accelerated academic instruction. Therefore, we are not going to have it the same length. We will give the teachers one day of planning and whatnot, room set up, July 7th, and then they would do twelve days of instruction instead of fifteen, like we are having for our RTA.
The day seven is your setup day.
Correct. That's their planning and setup, which we were unable to do previously. Once again, we do have a PRC to be able to support this. And we have money set aside already in 163 that expires in June, about fifty thousand dollars that we can spend on summer school materials. And then again, we would do busing and additional employee costs in 171 and 181. And we have two different CTE programs. Ms. Wrighton is working with her team to be able to support these programs. So Ms. Wrighton and I have worked together, but Ms. Wrighton and Ms. Harris have really been the driving force with these programs.
Awesome.
Good afternoon. So we have received funding about a little over twenty thousand dollars to fund a CTE Accelerator Camp, which is sort of like a career exploration type of camp. We're planning to have that camp the last week in July. We see that July the 21st is gonna be a planning day for our CTE staff that will be participating. Again, we're using that same teacher pay scale, one to seven years, twenty-five dollars an hour, eight to fourteen, thirty dollars and fifteen plus, thirty-five dollars an hour. With this grant, we did have to partner with a community or a business partner. So we are partnering with Beaufort County Community College, and they are providing some of the camps for us. And we're also planning to hire two to three CTE teachers for this camp. Funds will come from PRC 177 and ESAR funds, and it will be located at the middle school.
And we're really excited about this one because the kids are gonna get to choose the different camps that they want to attend. And it also provides students who might not be at risk an opportunity to do something during the summer as well.
And so they really have a lot of exciting camps for this. Beaufort has the drone camp, they have programming, they have financial literacy, babysitting. They even have a forensic science camp, crime scene investigation, so we're really excited about it. And we're also having a similar program, if you would, at the high school. And these will be single-day sessions at the high school, which we would like to call them master classes. And we'll be soliciting different skilled professionals within the community to offer these classes. And so we will be contracting with these local professionals, and they will lead our skills camp. Again, this pay will be based kind of the same as the other camps, and our skilled professionals, we're looking to pay them thirty, thirty dollars per hour and as well as provide a supply budget. Again, the same PRC 177, ESAR funds and 171, and this camp will be located at Washington County High School.
And so any high school student, it isn't just open for just Washington High School students, the early college students would be happy to attend there. We're just doing it in one centralized location, and we're going to make sure that we do an interest survey to know which careers that the students are excited about having. And that's how we're going to finalize our local business contractors.
Are you saying that the early college students can participate too?
Yes, most definitely.
Not no argument.
Questions for me?
Our next one is AIG. You guys probably have already seen the report that was put out by the state that showed the learning loss and how it was then measured throughout the state. One of the, the big, like glaring things for me was AIG. A lot of times, we think that AIG students are gonna farewell no matter what, and we saw that that was not true in the pandemic. And that those students did actually not progress nearly as much as some of our other students. And so we think that's gonna be really important, that we provide an AIG camp to kind of engage and re-motivate students this year. So we have proposed an idea for a week-long AIG camp.
Good evening. So as Ms. Simpson said, we're proposing a week-long AIG camp, same pay grade as the other camps. We're looking at three to four teachers by grade span. We would invite the gifted identified students, third through twelfth grade. It would be overseen by myself and Mr. Price, and the funding would come through AIG funds, ESAR funds, and 171.
And this camp would be a little bit shorter because it's not mandated on hours. And this is what we're choosing to do to support that group of students. And remember that RTA and Summer Bridge are focused on at-risk students because that's what's written into legislation. And this camp allows us to be able to provide additional enrichment resources to those students that don't have the opportunity to attend that camp. And this also is written into our AIG plan.
Thank you.
And then I don't know what happened, but last but not least, we are looking at transition camps. So one of the biggest things we noticed was that there was not time for students to get accolade to new buildings. Our, our high schoolers didn't have that, our middle schoolers didn't have that, and especially our kindergarten students, like first time coming into that building. And so as we think through this process, giving the schools the ability to create a mini-program, two, three, max four days of time where their teachers can build a program. Kindergarten, in talking with pre-K teachers, really seeing that, like, those kids probably aren't gonna be able to last a full day. So bringing them in for maybe half-day, get them used to what a bus looks like and how they're gonna walk and where they're gonna go. And entering sixth graders, even though they're currently, most of them are currently at the middle school already, you know, they're gonna be with a new principal. They're gonna have different rules to follow, they're gonna have different, you know, paths to do. And then our high schools, you know, our, our high schools look really different. So allowing our principals to really build out a transition camp for a small period of time. The high school would be towards the end of July, the two elementary camps would be, or elementary-middle camps would be towards the beginning of August to meet the needs of those students and those teachers at that building. But allow them to be a little bit more familiar with their surroundings when they come in that first day of school, so it's not quite so scary to those transitioning students. This one would not have nearly as much cost as the others, but it would still definitely have a cost involved. But we do feel like it's really important, something that was missing from last year. One of the big takeaways I want you guys to notice is that we really tried to make sure that we were maximizing the month of July. Last year, there was a, a big confusion between summer testing and summer school. Notice that all summer testing is happening in June. We are not interrupting that with summer programming at all. And we're also not prepaying teachers for summer school, and that was a really difficult issue for us to work through last year. Having to prepay people, that means they were getting paid early in June, and they hadn't worked any of those days yet. And so we really tried to think through those, concentrating it in the month of July, so that they, teachers have time in June, and they have time in August, depending on, you know, when their school starts, to really kind of facilitate that. So those are the camps. As house bills change and whatnot, and we get different school business laws brought down, there might be some additional things I bring back to you guys. But did wanna give you guys kind of an update of where we were with the summer programming, and then continue to work with the school teams to build this out.
So you need an approval tonight, too?
I would like approval. I, it's not an official thing, like, there's nothing that we have to sign and send to the state, but it is something that we want to make sure that you guys are comfortable as we continue to move down this timeline. Last year, planning it in June was very difficult. And so, as you guys know, I like to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row prior to that, so we're all on the same page.
Yes, ma'am. So, boy, we need a motion to approve the summer, summer programs.
Second.
So moving properly second, Ms. Chair. I mean, as have it, motion care. Many updates. Ms. Jolanda Jordan. We have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. The Board of Education Finance Committee met yesterday to go over some items. I have three states, I mean, I'm sorry, three budget amendments for you this evening. It's gonna be the state budget amendment. Twenty-two seventeen. This is mostly reconciling the restart transfer that was done. They finally put it on their books. And so some of the items that were just off by cents had to be reconciled. And then also, there was an allotment that came in for three hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and seven dollars, and that's gonna be the teacher supplement, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But that's all a part of this budget amendment for state. So the overall increase on the state is two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and eight cents, bringing the total state budget to twelve million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty cents.
Want approval, you want just approval as we go through, Ms. Jordan, and then we're.
That's fine. Are you, want me to just go through all three of them and then?
Yeah, then we just.
Next, we have the local budget amendment twenty-two eighteen, and this is just a request from Dr. Carr to appropriate fund balance of twenty-five hundred dollars. And that would bring that total budget up to one million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, ninety-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. And the final budget amendment is our state budget, I'm sorry, federal budget amendment twenty-two nineteen. And this one is our allotment for Title I, six hundred and fourteen thousand, forty, four hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-five cents. An additional ninety dollars in our improving teacher quality. There was a reversion of sixteen hundred and five dollars on SIR two. And then that, that's a new and growing charter schools, and then we had an increase in SIR three of nineteen thousand, twelve dollars for the same reason. We also got an extra funding in for our homeless three, homeless two grant, SIR three for sixteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars. Our IDA grants to states an additional twenty thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars, and then ARP, SIR three preschool, five thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars, a total of six hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-five cents, bringing the total federal budget to twelve thousand, eight hundred and three thousand, twelve million, eight hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-nine cents. Any questions on those?
Well, we need a motion to approve the amendments in the state teacher supplement. I'm sorry, twenty-seven, twenty-two seventeen, twenty-two eighteen, as for Zena, I'm sorry.
Twenty-two nineteen.
Twenty-two nineteen.
Make a motion that we approved amendments twenty-two seventeen, twenty-two eighteen, twenty-two nineteen.
So moving properly second, Ms. Chair. Mr. Norman. Ms. Clark. For me, I say, motion care, can we, Ms. Jordan?
The next Board of Education action item I have is the state teacher supplement. In January, the State Board of Education met, and they decided to give teachers a supplement. This is not to supplant our local supplement that we already have in place. And that allotment that they gave us, the three hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and seven dollars, is divided up between all of the people that are currently getting the local supplement. And that is going to be paid out in March for the months of January and February. The rationale for implementing it this way was that because we got the allotment late in February, we're able to just start it now, and then we were gonna just look back to January one, since that was when it was approved in January, wasn't in existence last year. And then the other stipulation was that they had to be currently employed as of March first, because this is an incentive more than a salary. So that'll be this year's implementation. This funding is supposed to be recurring every year. We do have a biennium this year when we got this, so I know we'll get the funding next year. Beyond that, I don't know, it's gonna always be contingent upon state funding. The other thing is that it's always going to be a different allotment. They're gonna just give us what they give us. In the stipulation of what they gave us this time, they gave us the dollar amount, and they gave us the, the max that we couldn't exceed. So the number that you've seen on that first chart that Mr. Smith pulled up were the numbers that we could not exceed. And so out of the three hundred and forty thousand, we were able to divide it amongst all the people. And the estimated payout throughout the timeframe will be two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. Now, I say estimate because I'll be paying that out monthly based on the actual hours worked. The other thing is, as you noticed with the calendar, I talked about, well, let's go over the calendar. From January to June, everybody's on a different calendar, so there's gonna be different days that left in the year. So everybody's calendar was divided out by day for me to end up coming up with that calculation. And so when the payout goes in March, the amounts will be different throughout the year. But at June, everybody would have gotten the same total. It's just the way it's calculated because everybody's on a different calendar. For example, there's about a hundred and five days left on the high school calendar because they end in May versus the middle school, elementary calendars, they get out in June, so their days are longer, and so that's how the numbers are different. There is a town hall on Thursday, and so I'll be on that town hall explaining that to any teachers that have questions about this. But basically, this is a pleasant surprise that the state wrote this into the budget, and so we're grateful that they did it and that they gave us the flexibility to make sure that every teacher got this and not just state-paid teachers. And so that's the plan, and I'm asking for board approval to implement this plan, and we will start the first payments with this pay period in March. Yes, sir.
So they'll get, just so everybody knows, they'll get January and February, they get, you see some money, a check for both of those months.
Yes, in March, we're gonna pay, January, February, and April, we're gonna pay for March time period, in May, we're gonna pay for April. And then in June, we're gonna pay for May and June, since that's the last payment.
Want the retro being this?
Retro is not in this. Retro is coming out this month also.
Retro was coming out this month.
Retro is coming out this month, and also longevity for the people that had longevity between July and December. So all of those reconciliations will take place this month.
Good news.
That's a lot of good news for everybody. The checks will be high, taxes will be high as a result. Just finding out that there's a lot of money coming, rolling out this month.
Yes, so you need to plan wisely. Plan wisely. You don't ever know what the state may, they come back next, next month, say, well, y'all got it, but we ain't gonna do nothing. They said to the change tonight, they'll call them, meet the night and change. So, you know, just plan wisely, as Ms. Chair says. So we need a motion to approve the state teacher supplement payout plan. So move. Moving properly second, Ms. Chair. As have it, motion care.
More good news. Last month or early this month, I found out we were recipients of a grant for a K-12 athletic facility for a hundred and two thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. And so we need to go ahead and accept this grant, and I have the paperwork in there for you, Mr. Riddick, to do that. And then within thirty days, or by March 23rd, because the letter was written, I think, on the February 23rd, we need to do the spoken sequence. I do have a spoken sequence on the report that I'm giving, which I'm gonna share out right now. And the recommendation is that the money be used towards Washington County High School to work on the gym area there, the softball field, and then the baseball field. So the things that we're looking at is the, there's been a need for an air conditioner in that main gym, a second one, because the first one is not working. A second one, because the first one is not working too well. And then also, the locker rooms need air conditioning. And then there's the press box that hasn't been utilized. And then the softball fields need the scoreboard light for the softball field and the baseball field. And then the fence needs to be repaired, and then the privacy shield needs to be put up. So those are some of the recommendations. And then I also know that we're thinking about some additional bleachers inside the gym. So all of those things I did put into the plan. But again, that part I do not have to submit tonight, I just need to accept the grant tonight. And if you wanna go back to the joint board and designate exactly the projects you want, I can rewrite that part, because I don't have to submit that tonight.
I was, I got a question.
Yes.
I thought we, we've been talking about the air conditioning at gymnasium for, since I've been on the school board. I thought that was fixed. So I ain't know nothing about the second. This is the first time I'm hearing about the second.
About a second air condition.
It is still operating at this time, but it operates when it wants to.
So when them people, so, but, but what I'm saying is, when we pay them people to come out, they didn't know the air condition was in bad shape, me?
I understand what you're asking.
I'm asking when they came out the first time, and they looked, they told us the air condition was in working condition.
Bad compressors.
Yeah, I know a bad compressor.
But we have two units in that unit.
That's right.
The other unit was working fine. It's not been replaced, it's had some problems. So she asked me what would be a potential thing that we could possibly spend money on, and that would be one of them. Plus the locker rooms, neither one of the air conditioners are working in those.
Just, everybody just, just hold on a little while long, we won't be going through this.
Just for the high school.
Yes. The rationale for that was that, that was as if we're going to that new facility, we're still gonna be maintaining the facilities at the high school, because we needed that space and those fields. So that was why that area was chosen. But again, the scope and sequence, we can discuss, I don't have to submit that.
I was just saying, but with, but with, but with the, the, with phase two, if we look at the plan with phase two, it's still gonna be done the same time, if we can request more money from the state through the, the needs-based screen. Phase two, the ball fields and everything, that still will come. That still will come when the building is being, you know, put up.
If everything works perfectly and the stars align and the money's there. But we gotta have a backup plan. And so the backup.
I'm not gonna deny no free money now.
Yeah, the backup plan is, you, you only have a hundred and two thousand dollars, and that's not a lot.
But I know a hundred and two thousand, that's, that's gonna be the unit, ain't it?
With the controls.
So you got enough to do everything.
I put the bleachers in, I don't know how much the bleachers are gonna cost, I don't have.
Bleachers in.
At the front of wood.
Front of wood.
And the, uh.
The auditorium.
Uh-huh, auditorium.
Stage.
Where the stage is.
I think Mr. Cross and Ms. Peel and maybe the coaches would get together and give a proposal. Right, what, what is the most pressing priorities? And then you just spend the money until it's no more money.
Yeah.
So when we gonna get some money for Cross?
So this grant is for a K-12 facility, so we can use it wherever we want to. That was just the rationale, but if you not.
Just to get the money approved, then we'll go from there.
Yeah, because we gotta do so.
Okay, and so I would need to submit that part by September twenty-third. So I can send this, if you'll sign off and accept the grant. And then we need to then put the plan of what we're gonna do with it. And the funds expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I'm fine with it, okay. So we need a motion to approve the facility's green.
Accept the money.
So move.
Second. Moved improperly second, all in favor, Ms. Chair? Norman. Ms. Clark. Mr. Phil, some motion care, move right on.
All right, so also on here, the payroll calendar for twenty twenty-two needs to be updated. BB and T is closed for Juneteenth on June twentieth. And so we're asking to move the pay date to June twenty-first, which is the day after, which is that Tuesday, because Monday BB and T would be closed. Some other banks may be open on Juneteenth. I believe that's kind of optional, but I'm just saying. So just to update it to the twenty-first. We'll still release the funds before that, but if the bank is closed, the bank is closed, and that's why we're saying the twenty-first of the payday.
Okay, so we need approval for the payroll calendar. Moved improperly second, all in favor? Ms. Chair. Mr. Norman. Ms. Clark. Mr. Phil. Motion care.
The next thing I have on there that wasn't on the agenda, but it came late, so I just give it to Ms. Putterford. We have four, then, two vendors, four different quotes to approve the curriculum for. I'm assuming that's the summer program, that they need to go ahead and get it in line, because it's gonna take a lot of time to get here for delivery. And so the two vendors are Savish, and then you have the Schoolastic. And the recommendation from the PNI director is Scholar.
Um, Scholar Zone is the mass curriculum. It includes PE and virtual field trips. And Lit Camp includes reading, writing, science, and social studies, and as well as SEL curriculum. Scholar Zone, while it's more, both Scholar Zone and Lit Camp are more expensive than Savish, they are physical materials as well as digital that can be used multiple years, so we can continue to build this program out over the summer, where our Savish curriculum, which is what our current core curriculum is, is digital. And the paper materials we get are consumables, so we would have to repurchase that eighteen thousand.
So I need approval.
This is in addition to what we already rolling out in the district.
This would be specifically for summer. Some of, some of this would only be for our summer camp. And part of the
What I don't want us to.
Teacher feedback was about, we had our instructional coaches writing plans weekly for them for grade level. So sometimes they got them later, sometimes the materials we thought we had ready for Savish, because the teacher wasn't actually connected to that class, the kids couldn't get to. So we had a team together to review materials. This comes with everything, all of our teacher guides, the elastic is gonna help our guidance for our individual camp, to make sure we've got a scope and sequence, and we're hitting all of the main key areas for those instructions.
Okay, all right, good. All right, so we're in a motion to approve the vendor for the curriculum for the summer program. So move.
Exactly.
Moved improperly second, Ms. Chair. Mr. Norman. Ms. Clark. Mr. Phil. I have it. Motion care, thank, thank you, Ms. Jordan, you got something else?
For the informational items in the packet, there was the budget planning session memo. The Mr. Norman and Dr. Carr, Ms. Putterford and myself met on February twenty-fourth, and we went through a presentation and then determined that, in light of everything, we're going to just ask for the same funding this year as last year, but it also talks about some of the things that we need to brace for. Because in that state budget, they also included the thirteen-dollar minimum this year, fifteen-dollar minimum next year for their classified employees. I'm still waiting for more further guidance on that, to see if there'll be additional funding to support that. I do not have my state allotments yet, they're very late this year. But that's because they're still implementing this year's budget. The other thing that we are not sure of, if there's gonna be rates increases for the health and the benefits just yet. So some of that information I hope to have by the end of April, I mean, sorry, end of March, early April. But we still need to get the whole, the budget, the local budget anyway, to the consumers on time. So just put that out there, where we are in terms of funding, there's gonna be increased cost, funding staying the same, so things have to cut, just the bottom line. So when we're ever ready to address that, we'll get together, but that's where we are for right now. That's the budget memo we did. Banking solution update, since we last met, Truist is now officially gone. So I did secure accounts for child nutrition, Washington County Middle School, Pines Elementary School, and Washington County High School at Southern Bank, just to be able to do cash transactions. So that's a temporary solution for now, just until we figure out what's the next step. In terms of the audit findings that we keep having, our current program that we do right now for our school finances, school funds online, also have options where we can be able to get money either online or if we're doing cash receipts, that it's more automated process, so that this way, the school treasurers will know instantly if a teacher has money or somebody on that campus has money, that needs to go to the bank. And so I'm gonna be sharing this solution with the principals at the principal's meeting, and then seeing if we wanna move forward with this product. They're automatically gonna be upgrading, so I am gonna increase price, just because they're upgrading a solution. But if we add on these other packets with it, I think it'll be beneficial to the district. But at first, I'm gonna bring it to the principals to see if they are interested in this product. And hopefully that'll help us with that audit and show that we're trying to make steps to, you know, leave that audit finding that we keep having. Report was in there for you guys, and also the board expenses. So that was all the information items I had, are there any questions for finance?
Ma'am, are we fiscally sound?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I need in there. All right, we, reminders and other items of interest, I don't know if any of you want to point out specifically, but they're there for your.
Just for all Washington County staff, March tenth, we have the town hall. And Ms. Wright is gonna go over some information that we got that was very positive from Cognia. And so we're real excited about sharing those, and she put together a really nice succinct just presentation to share with our staff on where we're at with that. This is for everybody in the whole district. We're gonna have a really super wonderful arts night. It will be hosted at the middle school slash Pines and the gym. It will be on Wednesday, March the sixteenth. We will start by recognizing our visual artist at four. And so there will be a walkthrough where you'll be able to see, it is competitive this year. So there will be ribbons awarded for first, second, and third place for each grade level. Every entry will receive a participant ribbon, which also is very nicely embossed, that says Washington County Schools Arts. And so everyone that has a submission will receive some kind of accolade of appreciation for submitting their talented work. And then we will start with performing arts, which also feature the cover guard, our cheerleaders from both the middle school and the high school, all of our music program that Mr. Larios has been working on for the year with Crestwell and Pines Elementary. We, we just have a variety of things for you to come and celebrate, and that will start at six o'clock. And so please put that on your calendar for Washington County Arts Night, Wednesday, March the sixteenth. Then there's regular, you know, things that happen in school, like early release and progress reports and report cards and all of those kinds of things. But Friday, March the eighteenth, is an optional teacher work day. So we need our parents to note that, that there's no school for students. And then the next week, we're gonna start our spring community meeting. So please plan to attend at least one, even though there may be some differences between them based on questions from the audience. You can participate either virtually or in person. But the Plymouth one will start out at the high school on March twenty-second, then we'll move to Roper. And finally, at Crestwell. Also, we wanted to highlight, if there's anyone that has teacher credentials and would like to teach for Washington County, if you have a four-year degree, you can reach out to Dr. Sellers, and she'll tell you what you need to do to get teacher credentials. But if you're already fully certified, we have a sign-on bonus. There's a whole northeastern job fair that will be held in Martin County, and that's all the northeast districts, and we're all trying to get teachers, and that's on March twenty-third. Then there's also one that is hosted at East Carolina at the end of the month. So please help us spread the word. We need quality staff available to teach our kids, and we do still have some positions that are advertised. So we would like to have all of our positions filled to start the year off in next year. And I'll just roll straight into, I've already alluded to, that we had really good feedback on our preliminary results with Cognia. And so it's not official yet, when it is official, we'll do a presentation for the board and the community. And we'll share preliminary results in our spring community meetings. But we are very happy that last night Chairman Johnson and Chairman Riddick signed our needs-based application to move forward to NCDPI. NCDPI has five hundred million to distribute among the state for new construction projects. So five hundred million might, may sound like a lot, but like Ms. Jordan says, the pie is the pie. And once it's divvied up, that's all you got. So we do think that we have a really strong application that this board and the county commissioners, everyone has taken the necessary steps to show the condition of our facilities and the need. And everyone's made concessions to make sure it's a doable project for our county. And so the proposal is a consolidated school on the Pine site. And so we're really hopeful and optimistic that the fifty million with no local match will come our way. We will know very quickly, the deadline for the needs-based application was March fifteenth, and they plan to announce the recipients of those dollars and work with the county as well as the school board on memorandum of understanding and have that back to us at the end of April. So it will be really, really quick. So that's the superintendent's report and reminders and updates.
All right, thank you, Dr. Carr.
Yes, sir.
I just want to address a few things before we close today. I want to just say that Washington County Schools includes all of our schools. We are not a separate school district, we're one school district. Crestwell has needed cameras for some time now.
And that's been addressed.
If we could get an update on when they're gonna get cameras.
Absolutely, I'd be glad to address that. He actually brought to the board in January, proposal for them to get cameras. And we contracted with the company, we brought your quotes, we got our quotes approved. Cameras have been installed, and we're ready to turn them on. We're waiting on a server that has been backordered since February, beginning of February. And that's just technology procurement.
Okay.
And we actually worked with the company, they were originally not even supposed to get started from the time in January when we contracted them, they weren't supposed to get started till March fourteenth. But the superintendent led a fire onto me, and I called the people and said, I need you here right away. And they, they made a way, and they came and got the job done early. So as soon as our server is in place, all the cameras will be turned on.
Okay.
And not only did we cover the campus, the, the school buildings, but we also covered the, the greenhouses and all the areas behind the school, and all the areas in front of the school. And as an added bonus for all of our locations, once we get our new facility in place, we'll be able to transfer those cameras to the new place, because it's a significant investment for us. And we expect about a five-year return on investment.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, also, what are we doing about? Um also, uh what are we doing about the um? I want to address this because our high school, I know we see a lot of turnover at our traditional high school. Um what are we doing in reference to um our um alternative program that we? We I know we say we don't have the funding, but I do want to address that because. All of our kids are either when they leave, they either end up in the court systems. And then when they come back, they have nowhere to come back, we turn them right out back into the school, which creates other problems.
Well, the high school is a restart school, so there is flexibility with that funding. And the principal has discretion on how many people are hired for like, for instance, math, science, social studies. And then you design your schedule around the people that you have available. So um it, you know, the. We are already top-heavy with our staffing, but so that's that's where we're at.
And the only reason why I say that is because um I have a couple of things, because we need to um. They're turned right back out to the high school. And when they and then they they are immediately turned over to the courts when they're in trouble, and so that gives our kids records. And we don't, we shouldn't want that for our children.
Of of course, we don't want that.
And when we say um the school to prison pipeline. Um is really happening. And and we need to uh for some reason or another, we need to establish a um. An alternative program that our kids, when they come back, they will have somewhere to go. What we have done is we have turned the early college. When Ms. Gallup made it, when Ms. Gallup fought to get that place, get early college established. That was for children, that was for children, of parents that did not go to college. That will have an opportunity to graduate and be first-time graduates to college, am I correct? So what we have done, we have emptied out our traditional col- our traditional high schools. We have made our early college now has become all of our high flyers. With students in it, and parents that have been to college. And we have taken the, to me, we have taken this theme away from what the program is was pre- was uh supposed to do. And so I my plea tonight is that we go back to the basis, do it for the way that we said we were gonna do it, the way it's supposed to be established according to the paperwork. And then my other gripe is, and this is not to you and Mr. Price, this is just all together to both a community college. And thankful for what they're doing for us. But we have children down there that are exceeding, they go to both a community college, they take a test. And it's sixty percent of their grade, it drops their grade all the way down. That is not fair to our kids, if we call that giving them a chance, we are in bad shape. And don't, I don't, nobody can tell me is right, to me, that is not right.
I think what are you asking about, if they have a college grade that they don't perform well?
Then they, it is sixty percent of their grade, and I have parents that have reached out. And said that they want to turn their kids back over to the traditional high school. Because it is not the way that we originally established for that program to do. Now, I'm just being honest, we have stripped the high school, we, all of our high flyers. And I am grateful for AIG and high flyers, don't nobody take that out of this room, I am grateful for that. But that program was initially set up for us, kids that would not have an opportunity. And what we have, what we are doing is allowing that system to fail some of our kids. If they're gonna have an opportunity to graduate, then let them have the um the necessary stuff in place to help them to graduate college. That program was not established to send all the AIG kids to one building, that is not an AIG school. That is a early college, and if you read the paperwork, that's how we established it from the beginning. When we had these meeting, I went to the interme- I was on the board of education, and I went to these meeting, and I and I have a problem tonight. Because when I see parents reaching out to me saying they're gonna take their kids back to the traditional high school because of this kind of stuff. Then what we are presenting to parents, and that go back to you guys now, we cannot present that as the high-flying school. We have stripped the traditional college, and now we got two separate school districts seem like. We got the high flyers on one end, let me finish, and we got the, we got this end that we don't present because. Of the fact of what their scores and stuff, I'm just gonna be transparent. And I have carried this and carried this and carried this, and I will be less than what the people have elected me to do if I not stand up for what is right. I have an oath to uphold, and we are not treating our kids fairly. That is not the AIG school. And it's not gonna be a AIG school. Now either get it right or get it gone.
That Mr. Price bringing a presentation that shares with you um criteria, what he's sharing for recruitment. We do have an option in our county, which I um celebrate that.
Dr. Car, we got a student that do not make me go all to that in my community in that open session. I'm just telling you, I know, we got a student that was begged, that parents did not attend college. Because they thought that she would not make it, they begged, could they go to the early college?
Well, like I was. If we can allow him to present and show the data on how the selection was done. And just bring to you the real numbers on how that's set up. I think that that would would help open up everybody's mind to maybe where it was, where where it is, and following rules.
What kind of conversations are y'all, what kind of conversations are y'all having with both community college about kid scores? Are y'all having, are y'all in any of those meetings? Do we sit on any of those boards? Are we in any of those meetings where they are making decisions for our kids to say sixty percent of your grade? Your test that you take, kids that made nineties and hundreds, and you, y'all know I'm telling the truth. They go take, they get a test score, they make a, they don't pass.
And that's why I'm saying, let's bring into you the rules that exist in twenty twenty two. Cause the rules continue to change, some of the things that exist in.
We don't have to use a system that's failing our kids, Dr. Car, we don't choose to, this other program, other schools that offer, other community colleges offer. Uh early colleges. They're saying it, and I know some that's only thirty percent, that I could bring you tonight, but I choose not to do that. So if they want us to continue to collaborate and work with them, they gotta work with us. And God knows in heaven, we don't present from the high school because we say we afraid of what grades look like. We, I would too, if all the high flyers go to one building. We one school district, we are one school district, we are one school district.
We are.
It's not, it's not sitting in a separate, and and it is saying, because we allow it, we are allowing it.
We do have two.
Poor cri- no, we got, we one Washington County school though. And all your resources are being dumped into one building, when we got kids over there that's going, I'm telling the truth. We got kids that's going over there to the high school, we got kids that's going to the high school.
We'll bring you some data.
Now, I'ma finish what I'm saying. We got kids going to the high school that that God knows in heaven, that's going in the court system and everything. And we sitting on this board, we got a responsibility to our children in this community, y'all.
Yeah, we do.
We got a responsibility, and we need an alternative program that when kids are turned out, guys, listen to me. That uh we turn them right back into the high school and we leave them from Miss Peel, they had to deal with it. You don't have to go over there and deal with it, Dr. Car, y'all don't have to go, we leave it to them to have to deal with it. And it's not fair.
We need an alternative school.
We need an alternative school, y'all, and I and I hate to do it like that, but we've been asking. We need a alter- we had alternative program, and God gonna bless us to be able to get our new school, but right now, we gotta take care of what we got. Six years, and thank God, Dan just told us tonight that they got, we got cameras at Crestwell, but it's been six years. All I'm saying is, we got a problem, we need to address it, that's why we're the board of education. We need an alternative school, and that ain't a question, that's a directive that we can give you. We need an alternative program, we turning all our kids to the court system, well, when the court pick them up, when that, why, why we gotta do that? When we should be trying to keep this school, the prison pipeline out of our district. And they look like, can I say it, the majority of us are sitting on this board, and we got a responsibility to them. That's real now, that's real, that's from my heart, that ain't from nowhere else, it's from my heart. And I didn't get on this board to show and have fame and and just look good at it. I got on this board because I got a responsibility to every child in Washington County schools. And I'm not gonna sit by on the sideline and allow it to continue to happen, I can't do it no more, I can't do it.
Because I brought the paperwork to let them know what that early college was for, Ms. Ms. Uh. She she, they prioritied that early college, it's for children that cannot afford to go to school. Everybody that's going is reaching things. It's time to stop it.
That's all I got, I'm just, my heart is there tonight, I'm sorry, we we are one unit.
You're right.
If we say we Washington County school, let's be Washington County schools.
We we've had the data that was presented to us to show us what those numbers looked like. In the suspension and all of those categories just earlier this.
Yeah, but you know what, but we don't have nowhere to send the kids, Ms. Chair. Y'all turn, we let, we allowed them to turn them back into, Ms. Peel had, God bless her heart. That she can have high blood pressure trying to figure out how to sit in courts with these babies. When we had an alternative program, they could be released back into that program until they can gather themselves to go back into. You got an SO that try to keep the kids out the court system, but you know what we do? We ain't got nowhere for them to go, so we turn to the courts, we getting records. That's on us, that blood on our hands, oh yes it is, because if we have programs for them to go back into, we wouldn't have this conversation tonight, am I right? I'm telling you the truth.
We we got.
No, we don't.
Program, and we asked for the alternative school, no alternative school yet. Not yet, we cannot keep letting these children go to that courthouse, and these people send them up to the.
Ms. Jordan, can you work out some figures how much that's gonna cost and how we're gonna pay for that?
Middle school, they got kids down there going to court. They gotta have somewhere to go beside the courthouse.
The list, all right, I'm I'm. We got anymore? Need a motion to adjourn, so move. You all in favor, Ms. Chair?